All right, I am going to call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting Together to order for the June 4th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo. Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Here. Welcome to everyone that is in person and those that are joining us virtually. Item number two is Proclamations and 2A is Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 48,000 gun homicides every year, making Americans 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has 332 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10.3 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $4.2 billion each year, of which 53 million is paid by taxpayers, Iowa has the 42nd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding residents goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas elected officials and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their communities safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and whereas in January 2023, I'm sorry, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15 while at a park with friends. On June 7th, 2024, her 27th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and other victims of gun violence, as well as survivors and loved ones of those victims. Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, this color was chosen because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of life, of human life. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2024 to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. In Iowa City, Iowa, we encourage everyone to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and declare that we, as a country, must do more to end this public health crisis. And to receive this is the Community Violence Prevention Coordinator, Jess Lang.
As Mayor Teague said, I am Jess Lang. I work with Johnson County as the Community Violence Prevention Coordinator. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Teague, for all of your support in the last year since the Johnson County CVI has started and been building. I also want to thank the support of the entire council. I also want to thank you, your Iowa City Police Department, your officers have been instrumental in helping me get this off the ground and getting guns out of the hands of people in our community and keeping the homicides at zero. That's the hope. So, thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to 2B, which is Pride Month. Whereas LGBTQ+ communities across the nation annually celebrate pride in their culture and community in the month of June, and whereas the annual celebration of pride began as a collective protest for the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals and communities. And whereas the national tradition of celebrating pride in June is a tribute to the Stonewall riots of June 1969 in New York City, which are remembered as the launch of the modern LGBTQ+ rights movement, and whereas transgender persons of color, including Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and Storm De Laveri were primary leaders in the Stonewall expression of just treatment for LGBTQ+ people and gave their work and lives to the cause. And whereas the City of Iowa City recognizes that many LGBTQ+ lives that continue to be lost each year in pursuit of living out their authentic identities, in particular transgender persons of color, and whereas the City of Iowa City welcomes and accepts people of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and culture of all residents, and whereas each year Iowa City Pride brings together thousands of LGBTQ+ persons from across Iowa and beyond to celebrate their shared identities and experiences. And whereas Iowa City Pride is celebrating its 54th Annual Pride Anniversary and the 55th Anniversary of Stonewall this June, and whereas Iowa City Pride will host its annual Iowa City Pride on June 15th in downtown Iowa City, and I encourage all to attend this celebratory event, which includes a parade. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Iowa City and encourage all to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality, members of the LGBTQ+ community, face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our community. And to receive this proclamation is the President of Iowa City Pride and also our nighttime mayor, Joe Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Teague, and Pro Tem Saleh and council. I feel like just about a year ago, I was standing here telling you we're going to have our biggest festival yet, and I'm here to tell you this year, we're having our biggest festival yet. Measured the Ped Mall, we're going to fit everybody in and still leave room for Fire Lanes, which is great. Our festival theme this year is Forward With Strength. And when we think about what that means in strength, it's relying on each other, it's showing up, it's being public and representative and seeing yourself out in public, people like you. And with our events, we like to keep them free and having that exposure, that sense of community out here at no cost to our community is one of our goals. Some of the new, some new programming elements that you may be excited about this year, we now have an after-hours show that's completely free to attend at The Inglert, which if you're up past 10:00 p.m. like I am, it goes from 10:00 to 12:00 a.m. with headliner transgender artist, Miss White. And then also, we have a new temporary art installation that will build and grow throughout the day, and then it will be gone the next day, Jeff, and done by our partners at Public Space One. So it'll be really exciting, it just keeps growing, and we're so glad to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all the other supporters that came for both the gun violence intervention as well as the Pride Committee, so thanks to all of you. We're going to move on to items number three through seven, except I do want to pull 6E for a separate consideration, so could I get a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to pull 5C for a separate consideration.
Which one?
5C.
5C, okay. Any other separate considerations? Okay, all right, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda for items three through seven, except for 6A, 6E, and 5C that will get separate consideration?
So moved.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Seconded by Burgess, I think. Okay, all right, anyone from the public like to discuss this? If you are online, please raise your virtual hand. CNN One in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 0. We're going to move on to item number 5C for consideration. Could I get a motion to approve 5C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Harmsen. He's the only male voice on my right tonight. All right, anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? CNN One in public, CNN One in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
No.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 1. We're on to item numbers 6E, which Counselor Burgess will be recusing herself. Could I get a motion to approve item 6E?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN One in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0. All right, we are, we are on to item number eight, which is Community Comment. And this is an opportunity for people to speak on anything that is not on the council agenda, and welcome. You have up to three minutes.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening. First of all, there is a county supervisor's election. My name is Brandon Ross. I'm not running for anything, thank you. There is a county supervisor's election going on until 8 o'clock, it's good to know. Good candidates like Mandy Remington, Rod Sullivan, Roy San, if I don't remember everybody, thank you. Anyway, I'm here today because I want to remind people, please, continue to write your Congress, your House members, your, the White House, and tell the representatives to stop, stop the sending of arms to countries much like Israel, which is basically bombing Hamas, to Ukraine, which is kind of a fascist regime right now, which is just, well, I'll get into that, and also Taiwan. I don't know why we're bothering Chinese people at this point. We should, we should really tell our Congress people to stop the aggression against these people. First of all, I am Ukrainian, my family, half my family is from Kiev area for hundreds of years. I am second-generation Ukrainian-American, I'm also Jewish on that side. I would like to say that the most recent news regarding that particular conflict is that Antony Blinken and Biden, President Biden, excuse me, have indicated that it would be great if the Ukrainians could use any of the arms that they can get from any of the NATO countries, and there are 32 of those countries, including the U.S., which basically is the ruler of those NATO countries, and that we could, that they could send bombs, nuclear tipped bombs, and they could send, they could send the top-rated missiles into Russian cities. Already, there have been bombs that have gone off into commercial areas and civilian areas into Russian areas. Right now, Volodymyr Zelensky is no longer constitutionally president, but he canceled elections in Ukraine, so you cannot have an election. He has shut down 14 opposition parties. He has imprisoned his number-one opposition leader. He has shut down five out of the six media companies. He has also closed churches, and he doesn't want to go anywhere. He is known to be a very corrupt leader, much like many of the previous Ukrainian leaders. I am Ukrainian, I do not accept this leadership that is in Ukraine. It is a violent fascist group, it is anti-Semitic. In 2019, Israel came out with a study that showed that Ukraine was the most anti-Semitic country in Europe. So they are also anti-LGBTQ, they are, they are anti-Tartar, they are anti-Roma, they are anti-Russian, and they are violent. And this is the group that the U.S. got with 10 years ago, when they sponsored the coup in Ukraine and overthrew the president. And this was McCain and Newland and Lindsey Graham and Joe Biden. But Obama said, "I don't want to get involved in Ukraine and cause World War III," and he was right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic or have a comment during this time? Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Howdy, my name is Trent Greerson. I am a resident of Iowa City and a bartender here as well, and I'm here to discuss a topic not on the agenda this evening. It's about the price increase for parking. I understand that my grievance may come too little, too late, but I feel that they must be aired on behalf of the backbone of this community. Adequate and affordable parking is a necessity for a successful service industry, and you know, forget the impact of price hike on our customers. I had an ankle surgery back in January, and a contemporary of mine had a hip surgery last year, which precludes us from walking to and from work. We would love to take the bus system, which is now free, thank you very much, guys, but they stopped running at 10:00 p.m. I do not get off work until 3:00 in the morning, that becomes a little difficult. Moving along, so the only option here now is parking. The increase would mean a substantial overhead increase for individuals or a living on the margin. Yesterday, I made $65 in cash tips. After nine hours of being parked in the ramp, if you increase the prices, that's going to be $16. That will be a quarter of my cash tips from that, from that shift. Other cities such as Cedar Rapids, which is nearly twice our size, only charges 75 cents an hour in the ramp, and $1.25 an hour for street parking. So, other options that we could pursue instead of this immediate price hike would be, we could do an incremental adjustment of a quarter a year in order to get us up to your expected budget. We could also extend transit service hours so that we're not completely reliant upon parking. Otherwise, we could offer permits to downtown employees. Thank you very much, members of the council.
Thank you. I'll have you sign it right there. Thank you so much. Anyone else like to address this topic or address a topic that is not on our agenda? CNN One in person or online. I'm going to close that part of our agenda. We're going to move on to our regular formal agenda, which is, we'll start with item 9A. This is the 2024 Water Pavement Patching Project. Resolution and proven project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2024 Water Pavement Patching Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mari Van Dyke, I'm with the Engineering Division. So this is an annual maintenance project where we repair pavement that was damaged from water main breaks. So the types of pavement that we repair include sidewalk, driveways, concrete street, asphalt street, kind of any combination of those. These pictures show kind of what the sites look like once the water division is finished with their water main repair. So they'll put back either rock or temporary asphalt. So I guess with this project, we combine the permanent repair of all the locations into one project. So currently, there are 28 locations in need of repair, and then as new water main breaks happen throughout the rest of the year, those will be added to this contract as well. So we estimate that about 15 to 20 locations will be added to the project by the end of the year. So the estimated construction cost is $320,000. That's for just the 28 starting locations. Then for schedule, we'll open bids June 25th, award the contract July 16th, and then construction would go from July to November this year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN One in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Harmsen.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Harmsen. We know that one counselor left, so we're gonna, we'll open it up for council discussion at this point, but before roll call, we will wait.
I was going to ask actually, just as a point of reminder, with the permanent patching, or so-called, that's sort of, that basically, it extends the life of the existing road until we get to a point where it's like, has to be completely reconstructed? So this is, I mean, it's definitely extending the life of the road, correct?
So, in a sense, the main goal of this project is, like, really what's out there is like an emergency repair.
Right, okay, yeah.
And so we're just kind of fixing that to the existing conditions that were there before the water main break happened.
Gotcha, yeah. And I'm sorry, it's like, yes, I saw the pictures of everything.
No, it's okay.
Like, I had a different thought to like, keep things humming along.
Also, I have a lot of different annual maintenance projects, so they kind of blur together.
Yeah, but no, the pictures explain it all, that's digital. Thank you.
But all of these are not temporary fixes. I mean, it could be.
So I guess what the city staff has put back immediately after they fixed the water main break is temporary until we go back with this project to permanently repair it.
Got it. It's no fun to have a water main break. Thank you. Any other question?
I will say, it is fun to get calls from people and be able to answer their questions because Jeff sends out good, timely emails on Friday.
Yes.
I've had that happen multiple times, where people have, have called me and said, "Why the hell don't I have water?" And I'm like, "Well, thank God I got this message."
Yes.
So thank you.
Great. All right. So continuing with council discussion on item number 9A, any other discussion by council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 0. 9B is Transit Funding Application. Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2025, state transit assistance and federal transit administration funding. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome Darian Nagel-Gamm. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Darian Nagel-Gamm, I'm the Director of Transportation Services with the city. The item before you tonight is our Consolidated Transit Funding Application, which is an annual application that we file with the Iowa DOT, the Department of Transportation, listing our capital and operating expenses for which the city seeks funding from the DOT and from the Federal Transit Administration. The projects contained in this application have been programmed by Iowa City Transit for Federal Transit Administration Section 5307, 5310, 5339, funds in the year, fiscal year FY, the upcoming fiscal year FY '25. The projects will be included in the FY '25 Iowa DOT Consolidated Transit Funding Application that the MPO of Johnson County or the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County is completing, and also in the FY '25 through '28 MPOJC Transportation Improvement Program. So Iowa City Transit may not seek funding for all the projects we have listed in our program and projects tonight, however, each project needs to be listed in order to qualify for, or to be eligible for federal funding. The four categories of funding that we are requesting funding for are as follows. Number one is our State Transit Assistance Program, and we are requesting over $694,000 in funding, and these are operational fundings that are awarded to MPOJC and then distributed to Iowa City Transit, Corvail Transit, and the University of Iowa CANBUS. The second category of funding is federal operating assistance for transit, and that's approximately $3.1 million this year, mostly used for salaries, salaries and wages of our transit staff. And they are, these funds are awarded from the FTA to provide, again, operational assistance for our agency. The third category of funding is federal funds for transit serving primarily elderly persons and persons with disability. This is categorized as 5310 funding in federal parlance, and this is approximately $200,000, and this will go to help support our SEATS paratransit contract, our SEATS paratransit service that we contract through Johnson County. And last but not least is the statewide federal capital assistance for transit. This is 5339 funding. This is over $34 million. As you might imagine, this contains the funding from which we will, we will be constructing a new transit facility. It also includes funding for new expanded fleet of electric buses, electric bus replacements, future paratransit vehicles that we need to replace when our fleet ages out of production, spare parts and the like. So this is really kind of our wish list of all the things that we would like to see funded. Of course, we've already received word federally that we've received grant funding for the new facility, that's the 19-plus million dollar grant, but until those funds are actually drawn down, they like to see these in our formal request. So you will likely see these for the next few years as we are designing and constructing the transit facility, until that grant is ultimately closed out. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have today.
Thanks for bringing this before. The one question I have, I know that we have 28E agreement as stated here with Johnson County for SEATS, and then of course, we have the MPO. How, explain a little bit more about this application. Why is the MPO listed in here where we're asking for funding for other communities?
It's a great question. So federally, the designation, there's a designated Metropolitan Planning, excuse me, Metropolitan Planning Organization in every metropolitan area that is a recipient of federal transportation funds, and they're responsible both for receiving those funds and for planning and programming those funds. So they sort of act as the overseer for any federal transportation funds that we receive. So they receive the funds, and then through Metropolitan Planning process, those funds are then distributed to the member entities. So the MPO... So the MPO JC Board ultimately makes the decision about how much of that total funding we receive federally that comes to the metro area gets allocated to Iowa City, to Corville, and to Canvas. So that's their role. They're kind of, they oversee the distribution of federal funds on behalf of the federal government.
And we are the ones that kind of apply to the state for this, and the other communities are not?
They will also.
So they'll also have it in theirs. Okay, thank you.
Yes, you bet. That's a good point of clarification. So Corville will also be going through the similar process. And the university will, would go through a similar process for, for their federal funds.
Thank you. Hearing no more questions. Thanks. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. Second, Harmsen.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Harmsen. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at six to zero. Nine C is amendment to Title VIII, Chapter VII, adding section prohibition throwing and shooting projectiles. Ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter VII, entitled Weapons, to add a new section prohibiting throwing and shooting projectiles into or on public ways and property. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dustin Liston, Chief of Police. We talked about this last year, if you guys remember. We have a, we have an ongoing problem in the community with many of our youth and adults using typically what the name brand is an Orbeez gun. There's other brands, but what, what they do is they shoot projectiles that have either water or these water or gel-filled beads. And they run around and play games and shoot one another with it. But what we've, the thing that's concerning is now they're starting to shoot it unsuspecting people, not willing participants. We had an issue last year that, Mayor, you, you took charge and led a CBI meeting that was very successful. The, the challenge we face now is last year was kind of a confined group of people that we knew who they were. It's a much bigger problem this year. So far this year, we've had over 60 calls for service related to these guns. And in the last two months, we've had over 30. If you remember last year, we had an incident where we had someone who was, most of these guns look very toyish. They're wild colors, but occasionally we'll have instances where people, for whatever reason, modify them to look real. And that's what I'm really afraid of, especially, you know, we, we had the proclamation today on gun violence. I would hate to see tragedy happen when someone mistakes one of these guns for a real gun. That's the thing I'm worried about. And without this ordinance change, we, we really don't have anything to do, any enforcement action we can take unless they commit other crimes. And recently, we've had cases where we've had to charge people with assault, with disorderly conduct. And we do really like to get ahead of it and work on prevention. If we have this tool, we can talk to the people. We always start with education first. And if that doesn't work, then we have this, this ordinance change that would allow us to write a citation, which would be a $50 fine. It would be no different than a seatbelt ticket. Just like with seatbelt or speeding, we try to get ahead of the bigger problems, and that's what we would try to do here. Like I said, some of the problems we've been seeing, if it's, if it's a group of kids in a park that are playing with one another, that's a perfect opportunity for education. That's where we talk to them, let them know that, that if the ordinance changed, that that, we can't do that in public places. And if that doesn't work, then we could, we could, we would have the option to seize the guns, and we could have the option of writing a citation. But as you know, we usually, we always lead with education first. So I'm happy to take any questions. Last year, the CBI, we're willing to do the CBI again, I think we should, but we need to identify a distinct group of people. The groups we've had have ranged from all over different, different sides of the community. It wasn't, last year was a very small group, and we were able to make a lot of progress with just dealing with those people. And it pretty much solved the problem, and now the problem is back with a larger group of people.
Was it CPI?
Yes.
Was the CPI?
Oh, Community Violence Intervention. Jess Lang was here. She represents part of that group. The mayor had a group of people. I think some other of you may have all participated in, in it. We knew a lot of the people that, I think that was the night, maybe it's, it, the genesis of that was an event, I think it happened during the, the.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, and Redmond got in the crossfire too, so. But that, that was very helpful. And I have a meeting on Thursday with a county attorney, and we're going to be discussing options for identifying more people to have those meetings with again.
Because the question I have is, is how, and I'm not a lawyer, of course, how is it not assault to just shoot random people?
It, it can be. And, and we have charged people with assault. What we'd like to do is intervene before that happens. So this year, we have charged people with assault. One of the things we've noticed, some of them kind of maliciously freezing the, the beads to make it hurt a little worse. And that's where, you know, they, they can produce injuries, welts, and sometimes they can break the skin. And, and then that obviously is assault.
Yeah, okay.
But the question is, you mean like they intentionally shooting like stranger?
Yes.
Or they, they guess like was playing and some of the, they showed somebody else like coming across or something like that?
We've, we've seen both. What we've seen is people doing like drive-bys with cars and just shooting randomly at strangers and videotaping it. There are some nationwide trends where people are using social media to videotape these events. And that's what we kind of see at the end of the school year. I, I think that's what the timing seems to be both last year and this year is kind of fueled by social media.
But when you say like you cannot do this in public, like for example, if a group of kids, they playing this game together and they went to like a park, and there is no one in that park, like in certain time, and they just was doing it there among themselves, is that also like would become illegal?
Yes. The, the ordinance, go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the ordinance does have a carve-out. If there's some event that, with the city manager's written approval, they could do that. Again, we have had instances where it was just a group of friends, and we go and tell them like, hey, right now it's not against, against city ordinance. So we really don't have any teeth to that. We remind them that it, it can become a problem. It's just dangerous to do. This isn't something that people should be doing in public anyhow because of the, some of these do look like real guns, and we would hate for a tragedy to happen.
Yeah.
If somebody said maybe also, if I saw a gun, I will just have heart attack, even if it's not a real gun. So, yeah, some people they just don't like that.
So I just want to clarify what's currently on the books and what this would change. So it's currently unlawful already and is a simple misdemeanor in our, in our code for carrying any toy pistol, toy gun, or other toy arms or slingshot out of or by which any leaden or other dangerous missiles can be discharged. Okay, so I, I think my primary concern with this ordinance, two things. One is, it's very broad because it's, it's much beyond just the, the toy guns and the Orbeez in that concern. I saw in the memo introducing it that there was some concern about water balloons as well. But I think having, this would criminalize, like literally skipping stones at Terry True Blood. This would criminalize throwing a rock onto a sidewalk, as it's written. And I think if we're going to be implementing, if we're going to criminalize acts in our community, it needs to be very narrowly tailored to address specific behavior. Otherwise, we have a situation where there can be discretion to say, well, these kids playing in the park, they're not hurting anyone, but if a particular officer has an issue with, you know, one of those kids or something like that, they can then be charged with a crime instead of addressing the outcome of the behavior, which I think we already have protections in place for that. In general, I am not in favor of criminalizing additional activities in our community. I think it's really important that we get to the root, and I appreciate you saying you want to provide education and prevention. I don't think a citation after the fact for $50 and a, you know, misdemeanor on someone's record is going to deter that behavior. I don't, I think it really is about social media and peer pressure and those kinds of things, not about what, you know, but I don't believe in this instance that this is a tool in the toolbox that will actually address the issue. And if we need to, based on things looking like guns, you know, a, those Orbeez guns are definitely capable of discharging a dangerous missile if they're frozen, for example. The code just says from which may be discharged. So you don't even have to have discharged it. If it's capable of doing that, it's already unlawful. So I, I just think if, if the true intent is to capture those particular issues, we have tools already to do it. But in general, I don't think that, you know, having something that, that criminalizes, you know, if I'm changing out the pavers in my front walkway and I throw a brick and it lands in the right-of-way, under this ordinance, that could be a crime unless Jeff ruin has given me permission in advance.
Where are you seeing that, Councilor?
The ordinance itself.
I'm reading the ordinance also.
It is unlawful for a person to throw stones, bricks, or missiles of any kind, or to shoot other dangerous instruments or toys, or on or into any street, alley, highway, sidewalk, public way, public ground, or public building without written consent of the city manager. It is the act of throwing onto a public way of stones, bricks, or missiles of any kind.
I, I want to make sure that we're, we are giving questions at this point because we'll be, come back, we'll be able to come back and do deliberations. But I thought you were, I thought you were getting to a question.
My question is, was, was my reading of the code as written correct? That it could be enforced that way, understanding that maybe wasn't the intent based on the memo?
Yeah, I'll, I'll open with agreement. I'm certain that you're right. It was not the intent to, you know, have tossing a brick onto the parkway or something to be a criminal event. In response to your question about the current toy gun and slingshot ordinance, that requires a dangerous missile. And whereas we've concluded that a BB gun would apply, our conclusion when this issue was first raised some time ago was that that would not apply to Orbeez guns with the gel pellets, probably whether they're frozen or not. And that's why it was decided we would need something more, and that's how we got to this ordinance here. We, if memory serves, largely mirrored ordinances that were already in place in neighboring communities such as Corville and North Liberty and use theirs as a model.
So I guess my question is, if, if our only concern was with the language for dangerous missile, why couldn't we say like, or gel pellet? If we're being very specific about our issue, it would seem, if, if, if this is a, if everyone's on the same page here, it would seem that that would achieve the same goal without some of the downsides.
Yeah, of course, it wouldn't address the water balloon part to that.
We could add that too.
Well, we, we want to be careful about trying to.
Hydrated projectile.
Make an exhaustive list because I wouldn't have thought of water balloons being thrown from cars driving down the highway, nor would I have thought of Orbeez guns until a year ago or so.
But aren't we creating a list with the new ordinance?
Well, it's still broad. I mean, I get what you're saying insofar as it lists stones, bricks, or missiles, but it ends with, you know, of any kind, missiles being a projectile.
So a water balloon is a missile, but an frozen Orbeez pellet is not a dangerous missile?
I would agree that a water balloon probably, I'm sorry, is that what you said is not a?
So under this, under the proposed ordinance, a water balloon is a missile.
Yeah.
But under the current ordinance, a frozen Orbeez pellet is not a dangerous missile.
We think we would have a hard time proving that up, yes.
I think you might have a hard time with a water balloon being a missile also, but I, I, my, my overall objection is, sorry.
I, I take your point about your, you know, whether it's written too broadly, you know, that's a reasonable point.
And is this kind of be like, why we're saying this ordinance will impose a crime of penalty? Like, can we just give people, if they did that, without making it a crime? Like, give them a ticket, a warning, without like calling it a crime? And just do everything as it is, but not call it a crime?
Well, we couldn't issue a warning for a non-crime. Is, is that what you were suggesting? Certainly, they could be counseling.
Or civil penalty.
A fine, a ticket, like, or anything?
Oh, like a civil penalty or something?
Yes, a civil penalty, kinda.
Oh. Well, we could certainly do that, but that would be a municipal infraction, and that's not something our officers, you know, can dole out on the spot. That's more, there's junk in your yard, you know, your grass is too high. It's something that has a much lengthier process and requires us to file, you know, something and pay a filing fee upfront and so forth. It, it's not the kind of agile response that officers need, you know, in the moment to resolve a problem.
So.
Oh, just a question for the chief. Is there, from a legal standpoint, do you feel like your officers are empowered to do that educational component, whether they're, you know, like currently, like right now? Do they go and talk to kids who are harming people or who are acting in ways that they believe are about to harm people? Is there anything preventing them from saying, hey, knock it off, it looks like you're going to hurt someone?
There's nothing preventing them, but there is something preventing them, us from seizing those guns. And that, that's, we would also like to do that because if we see someone shooting at someone in public, if they don't hit them, and if they, or even if they do hit them and it doesn't cause an injury, that's not, there's nothing wrong with that, and we can, there's nothing we can do.
But they can't carry them according to current ordinance?
No, they can. They can carry them.
The, under the current ordinance, they could carry these because, again, Orbeez guns are not, yeah.
Well, it says carrying prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person to possess or carry any, they can't carry it. I don't know.
Would the city attorney's office entertain an interpretation of the word "may" be discharged to understand that you could put something in an Orbeez gun that looks like a real gun that then is a dangerous missile? It seems to me that that's, that's where you would get that.
Right. I, I understand the point you're making. I'm just, and, and I'm not sure whether I would entertain that is what's important. It's whether a magistrate would dismiss it, is what I'm concerned about. I mean, there's been some case law about BB guns, and there have been many who have proffered a defense in saying, hey, the BB is not a dangerous missile and so forth. Ultimately, there's been some case law, not a lot, but some case law that says, yeah, that is. Obviously, we've had a tragedy in our own community a couple of years ago, I believe, where that, you know, hazard was made evident. But those defenses have been proffered. I'm fearful that if we were to try to prosecute someone even with frozen Orbeez, that there would be a pretty good defense on their part saying, hey, it's a gel, you know, thing sold, you know, in toy stores, et cetera, and that we would, I'm not sure we would prevail on that.
I'm confused.
Sure. Tell me more.
I still don't understand how as the, the current ordinance is written, not the one that we're, we're understanding, I'm confused as to how our law enforcement's officers are seeing something that says carrying prohibited, and we're allowing it to happen. Like, is there a disconnect there, or like what's?
It's the definition of a dangerous missile or projectile.
So if they can't carry a BB gun, for example, under our, just carrying a BB gun would be illegal, but that's because it is interpreted as being capable of firing a dangerous missile. This covers Orbeez guns and other things that you could throw and, and doesn't require to be a dangerous missile.
Okay.
It can be just something that's harmful.
So if we amended that to be more specific.
Amended which version, sorry?
The, the current, current language, not proposed.
Okay.
To be more specific to the issue that we're dealing with, would we be able to address the problem? Would be able to seize them if they were in, in public and/or shooting other people? Would we be able to do what the police department is hoping to do?
Well, if, it depends on the amendment. If you're saying, could we amend the present ordinance in such a way as to incorporate Orbeez guns?
Correct.
Then yes. You know, I'm not sure how we would phrase that, but if we would largely probably be taking language from the ordinance proposed before you and amending the current ordinance in such a way to make sure we're inclusive, then that would address the police's concern about their ability to seize the guns if they see folks firing off and, and so forth. That would not address the throwing other objects. But again, if you wanted to amend the current ordinance in such a way as to include the throwing too, then then we're probably right back to this ordinance.
Is something that's thrown a projectile?
Yes.
Okay. Could, could we not just say like toy guns, slingshots, and projectiles? Change that part, and then, you know, we could literally say hydrated projectile. Change that part and then, you know, we could literally say hydrated projectiles. Like, it's, I'm serious.
I, I understand what you're saying, and presumably that would address, well, I mean, we could write it in such a way as to ensure that we're addressing Orbeez guns, I think that's your point, without including, let's say, Nerf guns.
Yeah.
Sure, that could probably be done. But again, I don't know what else police officers have encountered being thrown. Again, water balloons is one of the things that apparently has been happening. I, I guess I can't speak for the police as to what other objects they've seen thrown, but our, our view was that we, you know, looked at what neighboring communities have done, have that worked for them. The answer we got was yes, and so we kind of figured we would go with what.
I guess my final question before I
Yeah.
continue beating a dead horse. Would we achieve similar effect, if not, or equivalent effect by amending what, what already exists in that way that we've been discussing, rather than adopting what has already been?
Well.
Would our, would our law enforcement officers be able to achieve what they want to achieve and what we want them to achieve? Because I do want them to achieve this.
If we were to amend the present ordinance in such a way as to be essentially inclusive of everything that's being offered?
Not everything.
Well, okay. Which parts would you want to cover up?
Specifically, we're talking about the Orbeez, the water balloons. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Could we amend the present ordinance such as, or to include Orbeez and water balloons, but not the stones, bricks, or missiles? We could, we could do that.
And that would achieve what our law enforcement officers?
Well, I'll let the chief answer that.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Yes, I, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll certainly have time to deliberate.
My question is just really basic. Have there been problems with water balloons?
There have.
Okay.
Not, it's not near to the extent of the Orbeez situation, but yes, around the same time last year that we were dealing with, we had some, some people driving around throwing water balloons into other cars, yes.
Hearing no other questions at this time. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and, and if you're in person, please step to the mic. Say no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved.
Move by Dunn.
Second.
Second by Alter, council discussion.
Let me ask a question. Let me jump right in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because it actually responds to sort of the, the back and forth thing. And I apologize because I have a cough drop. So if I sound mushy, I apologize. So my question is this, is that what is, because I, and it's a genuine question, I really do not know. What is the benefit of simply amending an ordinance versus adding another one? And I just, I ask that, I guess I should, I guess, I, I want to know both from a legal perspective, what is, is there a distinction or a benefit to having a separate new ordinance as opposed to amending it? And then from sort of the, the council perspective, the same question.
May I respond briefly?
I wanted to ask him.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, the only thing that I think is that there, there's a difference in the breadth. That's, that's the only thing that I see in the, in the difference.
So there's no real distinction, it's just sort of
Well, it's
the, the, I don't know.
Well, yeah, so I mean, like
The elegance of having it in one.
It's, it's addressing, it's whether we're, as I understand, addressing the existing problem as we see it, like precisely, which I think we all, I would hope that we all want to do, versus, I do think this would make it a finable offense to skip rocks. Like, like, you know, and I'm very concerned about that. I don't think anyone wants that, even if it is not the intent, it is the letter of the law would be here. And so my concern is with that, the breadth of what we are doing with this. I have no problem if we were to create an additional one, but it does seem like we have, as Counselor Burgess mentioned, we already have a tool, and we can make a very small, precise change to address the problem that this is trying to address.
In that case, kind of following up with further question, the skipping stones versus causing, you know, having an Orbeez fight, is there, and this maybe is a question for Eric, if the proposed amendment here were to say something indicative of, in the, in the act of creating a public danger or public nuisance, you know what I mean, adding a phrase in this, you know, this, this proposed, somewhere in the, it is unlawful for a person, dot, 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 without written consent of the city manager, to add something about public nuisance being, because I think that's kind of the difference, right? I mean, somebody throwing a paver, somebody, you know, that's, as opposed to, you know, what we've seen, which, which is, which is a concern. I am very concerned about that and what that could lead to, so.
I, I guess my hesitancy about that would be the argument that what constitutes a danger or a nuisance, I think is the word you use, might be difficult to prove, and any ambiguities would be interpreted to the benefit of the defendant, and I imagine we might lose a lot of cases like that. The only other difference I see is, again, if the present ordinance, which is eight dash seven dash three toy guns and slingshots, as long as, I mean, we've got carrying and so forth here. Now presently, carrying an Orbeez gun is not illegal, and, and so I want to understand what it is. I mean, well, I guess I shouldn't presume because it's council's decision about what they want to do here. But, well, yeah, so I guess in answer to your question, Counselor Harmsen, I, I would be hesitant to adopt such a standard because I think it might be problematic.
Cause a different problem.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So I, oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I have one question, maybe just to add to this, because I do understand that this is generalized, so thanks for, you know, it's too general, and they're going to be inclusive of a lot of stuff. I also just want to put out there that, you know, we see water guns here, but I can tell you that some of that is not water. So it is bleach, you know, it's, so how do, I, I think a part of the discussion is, how do we know what the next thing is that's going to come, come out? And how do we capture that? But I do understand, you know, the concern, absolutely, without a doubt. You know, the skipping of the rocks and all that other stuff, I don't think that's what we're really wanting to, you know, penalize here or, or, or go into, although there is already an avenue for that if someone is assault, right? If, if, if that's the, if that's the issue. But I just wanted to add that to the conversation. I won't belabor it. The other thing I will just mention is, you know, the, the BB gun that our city attorney mentioned, that was an event that happened right over there near, you know, Sycamore Street and the highway. Where someone was out there innocently, well, while they were shooting in their backyard, I think rabbits or something like that.
Squirrels.
Squirrels. Yeah, squirrels. And, and, you know, it actually, the, you know, the person sitting in the car, their window was down far enough where they had, you know, terrible instant, you know, effect from that. So I just want to bring that out there as well. The other thing that I will say in light of, you know, the work that was done last year, this happened during Juneteenth, where we realized that we had been getting complaints to the council level about the Orbeez guns prior to June 19th. We heard it happen in downtown through some of the parks, as well as through the, the Old Capital Center, where, you know, people are using these guns. We also, so we brought individuals here to City Hall, the individuals that we knew. We had a great conversation with them. There was also a video that showed a bunch of kids down in front of the mall downtown, I still call it the Old Capital Mall, downtown, and they were hanging out, and then there was a car coming. It was actually northbound on Clinton Street, and there was a, you know, they were shooting at this, at this, at this van, and the kids were running into the street, cars coming south. It was, and, you know, it was very, very dangerous. That vehicle that was heading north got in the opposite lane and made a left going where the, where the buses go. So this is a problem within the community. The good thing is that we have, you know, the conversation, the educational piece, we did some, a presentation that kind of showed these kids, like, you know, the, the concerns about these. July 4th, we had, you know, because the July 4th was coming, and after we had this opportunity to talk to them, we had zero, I believe, instances that we heard of July 4th, because we were worried, these kids were ramped up. So education does work, and I think that if we, whatever we create, I think the education can still be there, but if kids have these, you know, devices, they are probably not going to stop unless there are, there's something that kind of, you know, sends the message home, not only to themselves, but also to their peers and their parents.
I just think fundamentally, we have to decide what we want to be a crime and what we don't. And what's in front of us tonight would criminalize all kinds of conduct that we all seem to agree we don't want to criminalize. And our city attorney said very clearly, he doesn't want to add something like, it needs to be dangerous, because we might have a problem proving that. I have no interest in criminalizing activities that aren't even arguably dangerous. I, I don't think that is the role of the city, particularly when we're talking about our armed officers enforcing these infractions.
Go ahead.
I really agree. I did not see criminal penalty this at all until you grabbed that to my attentions. And I think the way that you explain it, since I, you have experience and you are a lawyer, so, you know, you can read like in the fine line, so I really wouldn't anticipated that, like, we're going to make it criminal penalty. I guess, so look at the $50, oh, it's not bad, and afford like this. But I really would like, as the mayor said, education work. I will just, if the education going to work, then let us do education instead of making it criminal. And also, if the, if we can figure out, use it like any tools in our toolbox and just figure out another way of, like, giving ticket or make it violations without making it criminal, you know, I will do that, but I, I'm not interested of voting something that will just add a lot better than what we have in this community.
And what I was going to
Go ahead.
I would just want to put this out there because it really does kind of add another element to what Mayor Protem just stated. My question is, is there a way where there is a kind of a stepping stone, where, you know, the warning is there, then there is, you know, first is the warning, then there is like, you know, $50 fine, and then, you know, the third time, you know, there is that, you know, that criminal option. So I put it out there, I don't know all the ins and outs, but I just wanted to put it out there.
I mean, how does that work with, I mean, we have a fine, it's technically a, I mean, you can't find somebody for doing something that's not against something.
Well, right. Again, if you're going to make people pay a fine, it's either a civil penalty or a criminal fine. And so obviously, if you're looking to impose a criminal fine, you need a crime. If it's a civil penalty, then we, again, would likely be issuing a municipal infraction, as I mentioned before. That's just not a, a very practical answer for the police. We've been approached in the past about trying to convert some crimes into municipal infractions, and I think the only one we've actually done so is disorderly house for loud parties. And that was more in a response to what we do when officers go to a location and knock on the door to try to just educate the public and say, hey, can you turn it down and so forth? But they don't answer and keep the music back, and no one will come to the door. Well, we needed a, a civil remedy for that, and so we did create a civil version of disorderly house. But again, it, there's a lot of work involved with, with going that route, and we impose it on the folks who have signed a lease there. And so there's, you can just imagine, there's a, a lot of things that would distinguish that kind of circumstance from what you could do, or what an officer could do on the street, you know, if he encounters something like that.
I think if we had fun patrol, it would be people who could say, hey, kids, knock it off and provide the education and would, would help solve the problem.
So let
Can I, can I?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just want to hop in. I've just been sort of trying to make sense of this all, and I guess one of the things is that, in fact, I think that given the, the direction and the tenor of the council in, in previous discussions about public safety, that the police force knows not to, and our legal department is not going to bring something to us without having considered a lot of ramifications. Like, it's not just sort of like, let's slap together an ordinance and say, hey, here, pass it. Knowing very well that it's something that, in fact, this council is and has been talking about and really parsing this finely, and I think for absolutely all the right reasons. But I feel like in slicing and dicing and parsing, the language of this, it's in some ways actually becoming oversimplified to say, well, if there's a paver, that's a crime, there's no interest in, and I agree, we don't want to criminalize something that's not dangerous, but I think the whole point of why this is before us is because in fact, there have been problems that are potentially dangerous, not simply for individuals who are innocents, so to speak, but those who are involved in it. It could become very dangerous for them as well. They're putting themselves into a situation where either they're playing around and horsing around, and God forbid, a, a traffic accident and then they're hurt, or that a gun is mistaken and otherwise. So I guess, I just want to sort of bring it back to like, at the same time that I think we are absolutely right to, to look at this with a fine, you know, a very fine lens on this. I also just want to say, realistically speaking, this council and this Iowa City Police Department and our mayor's office and et cetera, they're not just bringing something because they know we're going to rubber stamp this, and they think that this is just something that isn't needed. And I appreciate that we're having the conversation to say, is it needed or not? And we may decide it's not. But I think it's too fine a point to, or too broad of a point to say that the ordinance is here essentially to say, let's just put this through because we just don't like Orbeez. I think that there are real complexities and that there are the potential of danger, which is why it's before us. So I just wanted to raise that.
I'm, I'm glad you did because that's actually so, yeah, last summer, during one of the events we were talking about, during a festival downtown, literally observed, watched this kind of all, all happen. And that's actually which, so bear with me for just one second. There were a group of kids, teenagers probably, which, again, they're just teenagers, right? They're just kids, and that's, that's an important part of this. They're, they're screwing around, they're, they're playing with each other, but it's a crowded place. One of their, you know, crossfire hit a little girl, she was like three years old, playing on the playground in the face, and she started crying. Her dad was understandably upset, and he went, and I believe there was, I can't remember enough if it was an officer there, or it might have even been one of our county supervisors, that sort of intervened and calmed down the situation, people that were there, and, and de-escalated the situation successfully. But that could have gone a very different way. You know, I know that if I was there and being a dad, if all of a sudden my little girl gets hit in the eye, I don't know. I mean, that's, I, you know, we're lucky it didn't devolve into violence. Now you take that and you add it into the stark reality of our situation, and Counselor Alter has got her orange shirt on for a reason today, and I forgot mine, I'm sorry, I forgot what day it was. Because, so what if that dad is also maybe just a little bit aggressive and is packing heat, because that's the state we live in, that's the country we live in? Now these kids, who started with the Orbeez, who are just kids for goodness sakes, they're facing some really, really dangerous consequences. And that's the fear I have. So last summer, I was really happy the way that it all, it was a small enough group that that intervention, I think that was a classic example of, of what a good program that is, and it worked well. What we're hearing is we've got it back, but we still have all those dangers out there. So I see this, when this came before us, I was like, ugh, I'm so, so sad to see this. I really appreciate the, the concerns about, we want to make something that's not overbroad, but I'm not really ready to throw this out because it's kind of sucks to have to criminalize this and criminalize what should be a fun kid activity. I think it would be, I mean, I, I grew up in rural Iowa where there actually were BB gun fights. I did not participate, but I did play football with a kid who lost his eye doing that, so, you know, I'm not really advocating that, but I mean, I grew up in a different time and place. But I mean, I grew up in a different time and place. Nerf guns, I've been the survivor of many a Nerf gun battle with my children, these Orbeez things, and they're, they're really not meant to be harmful, and so I hate to like, be that heavy-handed thing. At the same time, I think there might be something about giving a slap on the wrist, so they don't find themselves in a much, much worse situation in our, because again, our society is not what it was when I was a kid. We didn't have the threats of gun violence. And so, though I think this is, this, this, does, does this make me happy? No. Am I thinking that it's unnecessary? I'm not sure that I think that. I think it might be necessary, or something else like this, so that there is something that we can, you know, impose that and stop this before it has a chance to escalate into something that won't involve an officer. In fact, I'm far less worried about officers being involved than somebody who's coming into our town, who has decided they needed to carry a gun places, they get hit in the face, their kid gets hit in the face, and that anger starts to escalate, and then we've got blood on the ground, not just a $50 fine. So I mean, that's, that's my fear, and that's, that's where I'm kind of looking at this and approaching this from, is I think, yeah, the Orbeez themselves, they're annoying at worst, right? But what about the next, the next thing that happens? And so, so that's actually, that, you know, and there is an education component, and we already heard that there's going to be an attempt to reach out. But we've also heard, too, that there are people from other communities coming here into our community and, and participating in this. What should be a harmless silly prank, but maybe in today's world, it's not.
Isn't that a slippery slope fallacy, though? To say like, well, what about, what does this lead to? That's not, that's not.
I mean, I almost saw it come to blows, I don't know how slippery slope that is.
No, I know, and I understand, but we're talking about, like, whether we take an action that is extraordinary, extraordinarily broad, right? I think we can all acknowledge that the, the thing in front of us is extraordinarily broad, in the way that it is written.
I don't know about extraordinarily, I can understand the concerns that have been raised. I don't know that, I mean, I wanna think about that some more. Is that fair?
Yeah, oh, it's, it's totally fair, but, I mean, I, I, I think, I think that this council wants to do something about this specific issue. This should, this should not be happening, right? I, I think that we should have the ability to, you know, take these toy weapons out of people's hands and, and try to prevent these, these types of situations. But I don't know that the way that this is worded is appropriate to do that, right? And then, we've, we've had just as much said, both from our city attorney, that we can achieve the similar results with an amendment to the already existing language, similarly from our, our chief of police. They both said that if we amended it to, you know, the, the minor wording changes to, what is the specific word? Dangerous missile, or, you know, we can just be more specific, we can address these specific changes and problems in our community, rather than quite literally, as everyone up here, I think acknowledges, technically criminalized skipping rocks. Like, my real concern is with how broad this is. We are not having problems right now with people skipping rocks, or, or as far as I know, people even throwing rocks at each other. So why are they a part of the issue, if that's not something that we're experiencing? Additionally, throwing rocks is a major escalation than using, like, a toy gun, that's assault and battery, clearly. That's already not allowed, you know? So, like, that's my concern. Like, I wanna do this the right way, and I just don't believe that this is the right way. Like, I want to, I want to be able to achieve what the, the chief of police is, is talking about, what Eric's intent in this language is, and I think, as well as what, what your intent is, but I just don't like all of the other stuff, that the baggage that comes with this. I think it's, I think it's unwise.
I guess the question for the council at this point is, is there support for what's before us now with some edits? Or what the Councilor Don just mentioned, are we, is there interest at looking at the current ordinance and adding in maybe more specifics of addressing the issue that we have on hand?
I think this actually goes back to, I would very much like to hear, is there a distinction? Is there a between amending an existing ordinance, or having a new one that's addressing this?
No, I don't think there's any legal distinction as to where the language is found, if it's found in a new ordinance, or it's found in an amended version of 873, the present ordinance. I would just wanna make sure I get some guidance from council about what you specifically wanna achieve. Like, for example, with the toy guns and slingshots, again, referencing something capable of, you know, firing a dangerous missile, even carrying it is prohibited. Under the proposed ordinance, that is not prohibited for carrying an Orbeez gun. You could carry an Orbeez gun, but as soon as you start shooting it under those circumstances that are outlined, then that's, then and only then is it illegal under the proposed ordinance.
You have to carry it to shoot it.
Sorry?
You have to carry it to shoot it.
Well, right, but I guess the distinction is, if two people are walking down the street, one's carrying an Orbeez gun, and one's carrying a BB gun, if we were to pass a new version, yeah, I should say, even if we were to pass a new version, we could stop the person with the BB gun, not the person with the Orbeez gun.
So that doesn't seem to really help if we're trying to prevent these instances.
Well, I, I think there's a distinction between BB guns and Orbeez guns, is short of it, the most significant of which is BB guns look like firearms, and often end in tragedy as a result of their looking like firearms. And, you know, they fire a dangerous missile. What is, case law has indicated is a dangerous missile, and again, I'm not sure that we could prove that up with an Orbeez gun.
So, right now, it's illegal to carry a slingshot in Iowa City, correct?
Correct. Assuming it's a slingshot that's capable of discharging a dangerous missile, yes.
Which would be like any rock, correct?
Fair.
Okay. So, I, I think the issue really needs to be about the danger, and not about the act of throwing something onto some public way. The, the chief and the attorney are doing exactly what they are supposed to do by saying, well, let's just be as encompassing as we could possibly need to be, because we don't know what's coming next, we don't know what's in the water gun. Like, that's what they're supposed to do. Our job is to say, what might be the ramifications of this down the road that we might not like, and try and tailor it to the situation? I, I don't see why we need a new crime, when it's already literally illegal to carry a slingshot in Iowa City.
I, I also would say, like, in terms of the difference between an amendment to what we have before us versus an amendment to what we, we have already on the books, I don't think it'd be germane to do, at least what I have in my mind, as an amendment to what we have before us, in order to affect the change that we have on the books, if that makes sense.
Well, i- if your amendment to the proposed ordinance is not germane to the proposed ordinance, then I would agree with you.
Well, so like, so like, basically what I've been describing, right? Could we theoretically, not saying we have the support for this, because I have no idea, but theoretically, could we amend the ordinance in front of us to achieve the similar effect, more, you know, surgical, and amending the section that's already on the books, rather than creating a new section? Can we do that in this meeting?
Well, you can't amend the other, the present code section at this meeting, because we, we haven't noticed that up. You can, of course, if it's the will of the council, you can provide guidance as to what you'd like to see, and we can bring it back, that's fine.
You mean, we postpone this, or we vote on it, or we would?
I'm sorry?
We have to, like, defer this, or we vote for it tonight?
Well.
If we want, like, to see, like, new language?
Yeah, I mean, you've got a number of choices. You can approve what you've got before you unaltered, you can amend the proposed ordinance in front of you. For example, if the concern is about skipping rocks and so forth, you could just eliminate the portion of the ordinance that makes reference to throw stones, bricks, or missiles of any kind, or instead, just leaving in the language about shoot other dangerous instruments or toys on or into any street, et cetera, et cetera, if that's the nature of the council's concern. Or you can vote it down and give direction to me to come back with something that's consistent with what you would like to see effectuated, or you can vote it down and be done with the issue.
And there is no way we can take the word criminal penalty? We cannot just say penalty?
I'm sorry, could you remove the part about criminal penalty?
Uh huh.
If that's the will of the council, sure. I would wanna know what you wanna do instead, because we can't just say it's illegal to do something and then have no punishment. I mean, we need to be doing something with it.
Like some kind of penalty, yes.
But like a civil penalty?
But it's not called criminal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not here to say you could not do that as a council, you could do it a municipal infraction, but I'm here to tell you that that would not be practical.
It's interesting, because I was actually, before, before you had said that, I was just sitting here looking at this, thinking about, you know, that it really does seem like the crux of this, at least one of the cruxes, cruxes, cruxi, is about the, the throwing portion of this. And if that is an issue that needs to be dealt with separately, but I think, you know, striking that part and keeping the shoot other dangerous instruments or toys, that gets us at least the Orbeez part of it moving forward. And so, I would make a motion to amend to strike through, to throw stones, bricks, or missiles of any kind, or, strike those words. So then it would read, "It is unlawful for a person to shoot other dangerous instruments or toys on or into any street, alley, highway, sidewalk, public way, public ground, or public building without written consent of the city manager."
You could offer a friendly amendment to remove the word "other" as well, because that, that word wouldn't then make any sense. So as to read, "It is unlawful for a person to shoot dangerous instruments or toys," et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. I, I will.
Accept that as a friendly amendment?
I will accept that.
Well, I'd also say, remove throwing from the title section. Oh, did you remove that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unlawful for a person to.
Well, no. So I'm saying, in the title.
Oh.
In title. Title, the title is throwing and shooting.
Oh.
It would not make sense to be throwing.
Oh, thank you, I was, I'm going back to the top, thank you for catching that. Let me say that I will make the amendment as suggested with the addition with the city attorney, and to include any other, clean up any other language within the ordinance that then would be necessary to change. Would that be an acceptable way to handle that?
Sure.
So.
So there's an amendment proposal, any comments on that?
Can we add amendment to take the criminal penalty, or can you do something else?
I guess I would have questions about.
Separately, maybe?
I would have questions about, are there ways to, you know, have written those steps? Where we have, you know, the education?
Yes.
Then we, you know, after the education, maybe we, you know, go to that civil penalty?
Yes, there, there is a great example of that, I think we could reference our, exactly, the, the nuisance house ordinance, the party ordinance. There's steps on that.
Party ordinance, ordinance?
Yeah.
That police come by one time, warning, second time.
Yes.
Would they be able to seize, chief, would you be able to seize the, the guns?
Well, the city attorney would better be able to address the difference between civil and criminal, but we really don't enforce civil ordinance. It's a, it's a, it's a process that they go through, and we enforce criminal law, so it would be a, he'll be able to address that better.
So like, the law enforcement would only become involved if, once the stage gets to a simple misdemeanor?
Well, right, and, and there's been some discussion about the disorderly house. I, I'm not aware that we've got codified, you know, that first visit's a warning, second visit's, you know, escalating fines. I'm not, I'm not aware that that's the way.
We have escalating fines in there.
I'm sorry?
There's escalating fines in there.
Are you talking about in the civil part or the criminal part?
I, I think of both.
Well, it might be, it's been a while, I haven't prosecuted it in a while. I know that that's true in the civil part, I'd have to check on the, on the criminal part. But I'm, I'm pretty sure, well, is there, do you know, there's, well, I should just pull it up. But in answer to your general question, could that be done? Yes, there are a number of crimes where there's a required warning upfront. Obviously, that makes it incumbent on the officers to, you know, document every time they're warning someone, so that if they do it again, the next officer, presumably it would be a different officer who encounters that individual, would know that they've previously been warned, and so, okay, now, you know, the escalated penalty is present. So, in answer to your question, yes, we could set up a scheme that way. I, I would wanna make sure that that's a, a separate motion to amend. Right now, we've got one motion to amend without a second yet, and I'd like to focus on that before we go anywhere else.
Oh, I, I thought we just wanna, like, make all the amendment together?
Well, those seem unrelated, I mean, they're related in the sense that they're all related to this ordinance, of course, but that seems distinct enough that I think that would be best addressed through a separate motion to amend. Which you can do immediately after, you know, this, this motion is resolved.
I'll second for amending, but I don't wanna cut off if, if there's still a desire to talk about it as.
I mean, I think I made a motion to amend that was specific, and that's, that's, deal with that first.
So move by Harmson, second by Alter. Continue discussion.
I just feel like, for me, strongly, I just wanna, I don't wanna make this criminal by any means, and I'm thinking, I, I really don't know what the language you guys use for like, law language, law, maybe better on that. So, I mean, like, there is something called sometimes simple misdemeanor, or somebody doing like, something on the street, that also will be charged by the, by the police, like, the police would take care of that issue and charge that person, but is not crime. What can we call those kind of things?
The police only enforce crimes.
Yeah.
It's, it's a crime, it's a simple misdemeanor, just like if you run a stop sign. That's a crime, and it's a simple misdemeanor, so, and that's what we enforce. But it's, it's a $50 fine, and it's, but, but it still is.
That's gonna show like a crime?
On their, on their.
In their record and something like that, that's what I'm worried about.
Yes, criminal record. Is it on their criminal record? I think that's what, the concern here.
Yes.
Just like if you got a Paula ticket, or something like that, it would.
If I got what?
If you got in the bar after hours, or person in Paula.
Under age. Under the legal age.
I never got those, so.
Okay, and, and when, when that's happened, and is this shown in their background as a criminal?
Yes.
It's shown that you had a simple misdemeanor, just like if you got any other, it's, it's the lowest level of misdemeanor.
Is that like a speeding ticket or something?
Same as.
Except.
And there's two, two other things that add to that. One is that there are opportunities to expunge your record, but two, if it's a juvenile, then juvenile records are typically sealed. This is not the kind of offense that you'd wave up to an adult, it's a simple misdemeanor and so forth. So, it's a juvenile, it would be handled at the juvenile court.
But the answer is yes, it's on your criminal record.
Yeah, yeah. If it's by an adult, it would be there, until expunged, if at all.
Education. Any other discussions on the amendment that is before us, which is taking out some of that language related to throwing stones, bricks? So, if no other discussion on that, we're just gonna take a vote on that change in language, we are not approving this entire document.
That's correct, and just a voice vote here.
All right, so all in favor of making the amendments as stated by Councilor Harmson? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you're opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes for to two. All right, now we can take up the topic that Mayor Protim just kinda talked about, which is, what are other considerations that we can have to relate to?
Yeah, I, I really would like to see a level of, if, if there is no way we can do this, and I, is there just not to do it at all, and, and that's it, but now you are changing the language? Can we just figure out like, a level of like, warning, and start with just education and warning, and after that, do that?
Well, what you can do is, is you can, as I mentioned earlier, you can require a warning to every individual before they're charged. Again, officers would need to make sure they do a good job documenting the warnings that they've given, but yes. But I wanna be clear, that would be incorporated presumably in a criminal statute, so, first time, we would write it up, they get a warning, second time, now they're, you know, getting the criminal charge, you know, with a $50 fine, or whatever the council chooses to make it.
So the, the, the warning, will that appear on their background?
Well, when you say your background, it would not appear on their criminal record or any kind of backgrounds check, it would be documented in the police station, they, they would know it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, it will be also, not documented only on the police department, it will be... It will be, it's not gonna shown anywhere in their background?
Not in a background check. Typically, background checks look, well, typically, I should caveat that. Typically, they look for convictions and so forth. Now, there are some who are thorough. Let's say there's a job applicant and they write down that they used to live in Iowa City. There are some employment agencies who will contact the police department and say, hey, what do you got? You know, open records on John Smith, you know, in your town.
That's an extreme example, but it could happen.
That is an extreme example, but I want to be complete in my answer.
Absolutely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
I certainly think that the idea of the warning and stuff makes sense. And it sounds like that's kind of already the process, much as we talked about with the nuisance, the noise nuisance. The one thing I don't know, and maybe the chief or somebody else could answer this, just a concern I have that maybe can be answered. So I'm thinking back again to the circumstances that I saw kinda go down. In that particular case, it was appropriate for the, if we'd had something like this, to be able to, at the bare minimum, confiscate the weapons and remove those from the situation and to respond. If we require a warning, would that make it so that an officer can't take away the toy? I mean, it just, it feels like, like we might, there might be circumstances where we'd want that to happen, where we want the ability of somebody to continue with this behavior or if the thing is. I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here because this is a new proposal.
What I will add to it is that we have the opportunity to work with the school district to educate on whatever ordinance that we have. So if we state that, you know, the warning is going to, you know, the warning will confiscate, you know, the Orbeez gun. And then the second one, it is a $50, you know, fine. It's a simple misdemeanor. It can be on your record. So I do think that if, if we, you know, confiscated, you know, the item and we kinda work with the school district and social media outlets to warn the public of, you know, you can no longer have this in public. I think I would be more comfortable with that approach because we've done some work to kinda say, hey, you can't have this. And I think that might take care of the situation. I will say that, you know, probably 50/50. You know, some kids are playing amongst themselves and others aren't involved. And for the other percent of the time, you know, it's not appropriate. And it is becoming a dangerous situation, not mainly between the guns so much, but other things that they're doing, like they're running in the street and doing all that type of stuff.
Doesn't that violate the Constitution? Because they're not committing a crime if it's just a warning, like, we can't seize property, right?
No, we would still make it a crime. It would just be, the penalty would essentially be, well, that's not quite fair either, because it's not like a court would be imposing the warning. But I think we could still probably seize the.
So I feel we don't have to take it from them because maybe somebody doesn't know anything about what we're doing right now and this law after we implemented. And they're just doing that and the first time they need to learn about it. Why we take it from them if we give them a warning saying that, don't do it on the public, but you can do it wherever you want to do it somewhere else, okay? But not in public. Why we take it from them? We shouldn't take it.
And I'm okay with that. The question would be is, what is the educational tangible material? And I don't know that our officers will be expected to, you know, walk around with stuff, but, you know.
I think we can do education at the schools, you know, like.
If what we want to do is education and helping kids understand the harm of shooting Orbeez guns and why that we as a community think that this is wrong and want to address it, I do not think enacting a new part of our criminal code is the way to do that. We have spent no resources, other than the one meeting last summer, on addressing this particular issue in ways outside of law enforcement. And now we're talking about all these ways outside of law enforcement that we want to address the issue, which I think is right, but what's in front of us is creating a new crime.
Yes. Yeah, I still going back to, how can we not make it a crime?
I guess the, you know, and sorry, I'm not taking over the conversation, but go right ahead.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, I hear you. How do you not make it a crime? And I guess.
Can I off, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
You need to trust your officers, right? They understand that this is not the preferred approach. They don't want to be issuing tickets. They don't have to issue the tickets in every circumstance. You think about how we've handled fireworks. We've got all kinds of fireworks violations every year. And there's concern that there's not the community education out there. So the officers use their discretion. We give you that report every year that shows that we go and we try to hunt down and chase all these calls for service that we're getting. In most cases, we're issuing warnings. In very rare circumstances are we issuing the citations, only when there's an extreme situation where there's a major public safety compromise. I would urge you to consider trusting your officers, give them this tool, and understand it's not the default.
I think that's true in all cases, because I do fundamentally trust our officers. One more question for you, Eric. In order to seize an Orbeez gun that looks like a real gun or an Orbeez gun that has been shot at someone and there's a concern of injury or people running into the street, things like the mayor was saying, the only thing that we would have to do currently is say that that particular toy is capable of shooting something that could be classified as a dangerous missile, correct?
You're talking about under the ordinance already on the books.
Correct.
Yes, it would have to be capable of firing a dangerous missile. We would need to prove that up.
And your concern, as stated earlier, was you wouldn't want a magistrate to dismiss that. But what we're talking about is a citation that someone would then challenge in court or try to defend in court. By then, any deterrence is done.
A child.
What do you mean?
No, we're talking about children, too.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, any person.
Oh, yeah, theoretically, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right, you're right.
But if what we're trying to do is deter this behavior, we're not talking about prevention when we have citations, right? If what we want to do is deter this behavior, if the officers say, this is a dangerous missile, I see what's happening. They're shooting frozen Orbeez pellets. They have the discretion to address that already.
How would they prove that it was frozen?
Oh, my gosh.
Because it's gonna thaw. Sorry, sorry.
Can you, what? Can you do, can you just read if you have the current, like, the current ordinance in front of you?
The part that we keep talking about as far as being capable of shooting something, okay? Reads, "Carrying prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person to possess or carry any toy pistol, toy gun, or other toy arms or slingshot out of or by which any leaden or other dangerous missiles may be discharged."
I have a question right there. It, all right, is, so if someone was, you know, downtown or wherever, can the police get someone with an Orbeez gun with that written language right now?
Based on the language we've got now?
Yes.
That's a question of legal interpretation. It's not clear, correct?
I think we, I would advise our officers not to seize those guns because I don't think we could sustain that in court. And I think we would run the risk of running into trouble, you know, stopping and seizing toy guns that don't meet the ordinance.
I was asking you to read that because I want to ask you, what the punishment right now currently for those?
So that is currently also criminal and a simple misdemeanor.
It's an unscheduled simple misdemeanor, I believe.
It puts people in harm's way.
So.
Okay.
So I guess the council could kinda bring this in, because we need to.
Yes.
What is the, so, you know, we already went through one amendment. We've been discussing what are other ways to maybe titrate this to look more like a civil penalty with a warning than a simple misdemeanor. It sounds like Counselor Burgess, correct me if I'm wrong, we could add language specific to the Orbeez guns and maybe add in language relating to water, some type of water balloon or liquid balloons to the current. Understanding that you may not be a, you know, proponent of this, my question is more, would that, based on what you're hearing by the council, would that address and add that specific to be defendable if the, if an individual was cited?
I think that's a question for our attorney.
Okay, sure.
Well, I'm sorry, and I missed your question.
So essentially, if we added just Orbeez and liquid balloons or projectile, or whatever you want to call it, and to the existing, would that give the officers the leverage that they need when they really need to go to the next level with someone?
Sure. Whether that authority comes from the proposed ordinance as amended or we were to amend eight, seven, three, the toy gun, the current ordinance. And I assume you're talking about with discharge as opposed to the carrying component. Sure, we could write it in such a way. I wouldn't want to use the word Orbeez because, again, as the chief mentioned, there are other brands and so forth and we don't want to.
Sure.
But if you're talking about making sure that we're inclusive of Orbeez-style guns and water balloons or other projectiles, yeah, whether we, you know, outlaw it in the proposed ordinance or the new ordinance would make no difference insofar as the police's ability to do something about it. Again, the only other thing I would add, if you were to add it to the present ordinance, that is, I believe, is an unscheduled simple misdemeanor, which carries a minimum fine. Boy, it's, I'm rusty here, but I want to say between $65 and maybe $850. Not that it'd be at all likely that someone would get a penalty that high, but in any event, even the minimum fine would be higher than the $50 fine that's in the ordinance proposed before you.
So it sounds like, if I'm understanding this right, that there may be more benefit to simply amending the existing ordinance because then there is not, to use some comments from earlier, creating a new criminal, criminalizing something new, correct? And it is possible to be inclusive of the specific problem that is trying to be addressed by this new ordinance by putting in language that talks about gel pellets and water balloons.
Right.
Right, in the existing ordinance.
Well, I don't want to speak for Counselor Burgess.
No, no, and I'm not trying to.
Either way, we are adding something new. We are criminalizing something new.
But it's not an entirely new ordinance.
Well, right, but I guess my point is that that doesn't make a lot of difference. Now, whether Counselor Burgess feels it makes a difference, I'll obviously defer to her. But either way, you would be criminalizing behavior that is not currently illegal.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I guess with that information, I would be more interested in just amending, maybe doing some more amendments to the current ordinance that's before us, just to kinda not, well, commonly known as Orbeez. So I think that kinda takes, you know, accounts for whatever the other objects are out there. So I think we could be good there. Now, the only question is, at least for me, that's remaining, after we've already done the amendment that passed that Counselor Harmson suggested, is, you know, do we have in here, you know, that required warning? And then, you know, doing the, you know, doing the, you know, going the criminal route? I guess, what I will say is that from this, from last year to this time, they've been operating with the educational part to this. And there has been some deterrent. But I think if they were able to say, you know, this is the ordinance, you know, knock it off. If you continue to do it, this is what we are going to do. So.
I mean, isn't that to Jeff's point, that saying that having this ordinance doesn't mean that they just go straight to that? It means that they can, they have essentially in their, the dreaded word, in their toolkit to be able to say, this is illegal, knock it off, don't do it anymore.
Right.
And then they go, oh, you've done it again, right? I mean, so this.
If I can just speak to that, and I appreciate what Jeff said about trusting your officers. If you remember the traffic study report, one of the things that they mentioned was how many warnings we give. We only actually write citations on about 25% of our traffic stops. So our officers always take that. If we can seize guns when we have to give a warning, that's, it doesn't, we're not, we're not in it for the 50 bucks. I'll tell you that. So, but we just need a mechanism. And I know the criminal thing gives some of you all pause, and I can appreciate that. But everything we enforce is criminal and we give a lot of warnings. And that just gives us the mechanism in which to encounter these, and encounter these, most of the time, youth, and work with them on, like, and it also gives the parents. I think that what, one of the benefits of this is we can talk to parents and say, hey, your kid is gonna get a ticket for this. Do not let him go run around at the park with things like this. So lets them know that they can help with the education, let them know that there is, there could be a ticket involved. So, again, it's not, it's certainly not about the money and it's certainly not about putting something on someone's criminal record, but it's just about giving us the authority to do the education and then in cases where we need to, to enforce law before it gets to someone shooting someone's eye out, someone getting an assault charge, which is going to be on their criminal record. We're gonna try to, we want to get in front of that.
At least for me, given all that I know that has happened, you know, between those that have these and the officers, and the danger that some of these activities have presented, they could have, you know, turned out into a horrible situation. I think I am comfortable with the current amendment that's been proposed, you know, supporting what's before us tonight. So I guess the only question the council are, we wanted to go ahead and vote on was before us as amended?
You mean in terms of the amendment that Counselor Harmson did?
We already voted on that in that pass, so.
Now, what is before us? I apologize.
Yep, as amended.
As amended, and so this is like the vote to pass it?
Yes.
This is the first reading. This is a three reading?
Right, first reading.
So are we ready to vote unless there's any other comments? Or is there any other avenues council want to talk about? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Harmson?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion fails, three to three. All right, we are going to move on to nine D. Thank you all. Adjusting park hours, ordinance amending Title X and Title Public Ways and Property, Chapter Nine and Title Parks and Recreation Regulations to adjust park closure hours. This is the second consideration. Staff is requesting expedited action. Anybody want to read?
Did you want to do it?
Can I do it?
No, no, because Andrew asked for you to do that. I saw Andrew all the time going to do it.
I don't care.
Okay.
Which consideration are we on? We're on second consideration?
Second consideration.
All right. I move that the rule requiring ordinances must be considered and voted on for a passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed. Be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and the ordinance be voted on for the final passage at this time.
Move by Dunn.
Second.
Second by Sala. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? See in online. Welcome, Noah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Hello, it's been a long time. I can't believe I just listened to an hour of Sombertown City Council meeting. That was pretty wild. The three of you should change your names to Burgermeister, Meisterburger. I voted for that proposal.
This is item number nine D.
I'm moving on to this agenda, I'm Bruce. You can, anyways. So, my question is. You can, anyways, so, my question is, so what's the penalty for somebody who is not in authorized hours for the park? Like, what happens to them? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, and council can bring up any conversation that someone asked when we do our remarks. But you can continue to speak at this time.
Okay, so my understanding of it is, is there issued a misdemeanor, correct? For being past park hours, this is a misdemeanor. Eric, you can answer if the council won't?
I think we'll engage with your questions after you're done with your comment.
Counselor may ask, yes, counsel may ask staff to respond to a concern or a question posed by the public, or to follow up with the speaker when we deliberate.
Okay. So my point is that people do get criminalized for being in the park that's a public facility because they're in there for the so-called wrong hours. Now, lots of reasons people could do that. A big reason is because this city refuses to house them, they're forced to seek shelter somewhere else that happens to be on public land. And instead of giving them housing, we have a landlord, city council, rather, board housing, be landlords, be, you know, do more capital exploitation of the working class. So this is, the city refuses to fund housing and criminalizes you if you sleep in the park overnight. You should just not criminalize people for being in the park because they're in unauthorized hours. It's ridiculous that you're criminalizing it at all. Yeah. I don't know, consider that? This is state for good, not punishing already vulnerable people? Not hard. Also, fuck you, Jeff, as always, never trust cops.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing and hearing from no one else, council discussion?
I don't think this is criminal or anything, right, Jeff?
Well, I think the intention is that if there's someone found that they're moved along, you know, when it's closed, otherwise I think it would be a trespass charge, is what you would probably see.
And what's the trespass charge? Can you explain that? Because I have no idea.
Oh, what a trespass charge is?
Yeah, what that will lead to, like, yeah, what's that? Is that a criminal thing also?
It can be, well, it is a criminal offense, but typically, a trespass charge requires a warning, if you will. That is, you are trespassing, you are not allowed to be here, you need to leave now. If someone says, "No, I'm not leaving," well, okay, now it can be a crime.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing that I would mention is, like, I don't know that, Noah, I don't think that we're engaging in maybe potentially the right way. This ordinance expands hours, doesn't it? If I'm understanding?
For two is not.
For Blackhawk and for two of the parks, yes.
Chauncey and Green.
Does it otherwise affect, I'm sorry, I'm just trying, I had a difficult time finding this.
It is on the...
It doesn't reduce it?
No.
Yes, currently, College Green Park does not close, Chauncey Park does not close. This officially closes those parks at midnight.
So, oh, okay.
Midnight is later than other parks.
Okay, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
It still allows you to walk through those parks, right? Trails, sidewalks, those things.
Unless you find somebody else.
I see, I see.
Yeah, I guess, I wasn't know that. I thought this is just like also a ticket kind of, or something like that.
What's prompted this?
It's the, it enables us to pursue trespassing if needed. So you don't, you don't get, you don't get a ticket for being in a park after hours? You will have someone approach you and say, "You need to, this park is closed, you need to move."
And this is what we do at other parks already.
There'll be a trespass.
Well, I guess, I understand that that's the effect, but is there, like, is there a problem that we're experiencing that's facilitated the desire to pull this up? That's really what I'm curious about.
Yes, we've had encampments at College Green Park.
Okay.
That's like a camping only, or can we just say no camping?
So I think all of our, I mean, as I mentioned, all of our parks close from dusk, are open dusk to dawn, except these four are not, and so they're trying to...
Why those two?
All the other, all parks, currently, all parks except three, close. And we're suggesting that we close two of them at midnight. So Blackhawk Mini Park would remain 24/7, not closing, that's part of the pedestrian mall.
You mean people can go and come there, and it's okay, but don't come here on Chauncey. That's not okay.
Oh.
To be clear, it's, the ordinance is not specific to camping. It's that you can't be in these parks.
Because the problem was camping, that's why I'm bringing it up. Problem was, some people was camping there.
Right. The pedestrian mall is active nearly 24 hours a day, right? You could argue maybe 20 hours a day, you know, but the pedestrian mall is plenty active with open businesses and commerce taking place at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. That's not the case for Chauncey Park, that's not the case for College Green Park.
I mean, like, for the, even as a park was closed, if somebody like slept there because they are homeless or anything, is that also going to be charged trespass?
We work with that situation the same we do with, I mean, this is a regular occurrence where we're working with the Shelter House Outreach Position that you all helped us create, and we're trying to move people into permanent housing. We've shared some of those statistics with you. I think our outreach team does a really good job, the Shelter House Outreach Team does a fantastic job. We've had over 100 successes in getting people housed. That's our first approach, that's always our first approach.
You mean tomorrow, if, after we disembarkment this, if somebody was, like, a homeless person slept on the Chances or College Green Park, you are not going to charge them with trespass, but you will work with them to figure out the solution for their situation.
Yes, we would continue to work with them, but we would have the tool to say, if you don't work with us, then we are going to trespass you.
At which point, again, because of the nature of a trespass, they can get up and leave, no criminal charge. If they refuse, say, "No, I'm not leaving, I don't care if it's illegal or not," then they would be susceptible to a criminal charge of trespass.
That will be for somebody who come for fun to camp, they have a house, and they have everything that they want to do. I'm just giving you the example of somebody was sleeping there. You will, you will find something for them for that night to sleep, not like, "Go figure it out tonight, and come to us tomorrow so we can help you."
Yeah, I mean, the best I can give you is, and I think the council's aware of the approach that we've taken, we've had encampments and locations for weeks and months last year. We had encampments that had multiple fires, repeated fires in the same location. We still exercise the patience and the desire to try to find housing for those that want housing.
Sure, I understand that, Jeff, but I just want it for this particular section. You're going to work with that person to figure it out for them for that night. But they're not going to be saying, "You just, we don't care where you go, but get out right now from here, and we figure it out for you tomorrow." But can you find in the same day or night a place for that person to sleep, if he's not sleeping on the park?
If that person wants that assistance, then yes, we would. But there may be some people that don't want that assistance.
No, yes, I'm just asking, you know, if they don't want that assistance, that's something else, of course. You're not going to force them to be assisted, I understand that.
Correct.
But yeah, just let you take it that way, so...
Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Nine E is bicyclists and crosswalks and using sidewalks. Ordinance amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapters One and Chapter Six, to require drivers to yield right-of-way to bicyclists at crosswalks, and to require bicyclists riding on sidewalks to obey pedestrian devices at signal intersections. Staff is requesting expedited action.
I got it, I got it, I already got my own, I got my own. All right. I move that the rule requiring that ordinances be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which they be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on, be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're in person, please step forward. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sala?
You called my name?
On nine E.
I did, yes.
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Burgess. Council discussion, oh, actually, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number 10 is announcements of vacancies previous, and we're going to go to 10A. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill unexpired term. Senior Senator Commission, one vacancy to fill unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, July 9, 2024. Airport zoning board adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport zoning commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic preservation commission, College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic preservation, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Historic preservation, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic preservation commission, Willon Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 11, which is city council information.
Nothing.
Yep.
Quick congratulations to all of the high school area, high school graduates.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we have three counselors that have graduates this year.
That's true. Wow.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Hearing nothing else from council. We're going to go to item number 12, which is report on items from our city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight.
City attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
City clerk?
No, thank you.
Item number 13 is adjournment. Can we get a motion? We will come back to our work session, but can I get a motion to adjourn from the formal meeting?
So moved. Moved with a request for a brief break.
Okay, move by Alter.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dunn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are, motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned.